Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our regular meeting for Monday, December 8th, 2014, 7:00 PM.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Rice has excused him of a business trip out of town. Tonight, we've got some special guests. They're all caught doing something good this month at the elementary school. They're gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but before they do that, they're gonna introduce themselves.
Carter Jeffers. Grade three. This hall.
Hey, Kenton. I'm in first grade, and I'm on AICOM.
Ava. Kindergarten. This is Low. Doctor.
My name is Anthony. I'm in second grade. My teacher's Mrs. Stanbuck, and I want to become a professional soccer player when I grow up.
My name is Noor. Kindergarten. Miss Joker. Full soccer kid.
My name's Deion Dye. Kindergarten. Blossom. Inventor.
My name is Ava. I'm in third grade. I'm in Miss McVena's class, and I want to work at Clearwater Aquarium.
My name is Bray. I'm in first grade. I want to work as a K-9 police officer.
My name is Anthony, and I'm in grade two, and my teacher's Mrs. Becker, and when I grow up, I will be a department.
My name is Marla Dan. My teacher's name is Mrs. Bloom, and I want to be a doctor.
My name is Emma. I'm in third grade. My teacher's Mrs. Parker, and I want to be a teacher.
You guys wanna lead us in the pledge of allegiance? The flag is up. Yeah, one more here, sorry.
Hi, my name is Emma. First grade. Best familiar. And I'll be the doctor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we're magical. Respect ourselves and other people. So we believe in ourselves, and we come back and tell them that.
Very good. Alright, once again, I'd like to congratulate our BE students of the month. It's always fun here with them, being when they grow up and hear the introductions. With that, we will move on to item number five, which is our student liaison update. Mr. Habenfeld?
Okay, tonight, we've got Ms. Jessen and Mrs. Rini from the high school to do a presentation on an outdoor classroom.
I wouldn't call this... Oh, I don't really need that. I wouldn't call this so much of a presentation as Mrs. Rini and I would like to address the board, because we are interested in writing a couple of grants in order to be able to design an outdoor classroom on some property that is already aligned by the district. So, Mrs. Rini's just gonna talk to them about what we... why we're doing what we're doing.
We'd like to be able to use the property just east of the parking lot by the football stadium. We sort of use it now informally, on and off, but we'd like to kind of make it more of a formal outdoor classroom for a number of reasons, but particularly so that we can get our kids out and be amongst nature. It's really important that they're able to do that and connect to what's going on outside, and to have those interactions and see how those interdisciplinary come together. We were outside today, just for a little while, making our own little body farm on the side of the building, so if you go over there, that's what that is over there. And we were hoping that when we did our classroom, that we would be able to do that also. And one thing that I noticed is, when our kids were there, we went from it being, "Oh, these are just rats," to after we had everything all prepped and to put out there, the students had come to come full circle, and they were very worried about, "What are we gonna do when this is over? How are we going to be able to take our corpses after they all decay and be able to dispose of them in a way that was respectful for them?" And I thought, "That is something that I would have never thought would have come out of this lesson, but it was something that we could see more often if we get the kids out in nature." And a lot of our students don't have the opportunity to be able to do that. We also saw that type of thing when we were over at Stone Lab, where the kids are working outside, and they, by the end of the time, they have such a respect for the area and the resources that they were working with, and to see them actively engaged was absolutely wonderful. When you get kids outside of the classroom, some of those kids that don't normally excel in our traditional classrooms, they get out there and they just blossom. They're able to be hands-on, it's engaging to them, it's interactive for them, it's things that they can understand and that they can see happen in front of them. Even with that said, the kids who have figured out what our education system is and they excel inside our classrooms, it just gives them another way to learn, to become a more versatile learner in that respect. So I think there's a lot of good, solid reasons for us to be able to make that much more of a formal classroom. We were thinking about getting some benches out there, having a sign, have the kids go out and actually identify the things. We had Davies Tree Service come in and talk to all of our students about invasive species in the area and that type of thing, and some of the careers that go along with that. And I was thinking, as I was coming up here, how powerful would that have been for us to have our kids outside, in their outdoor classroom, listening to that while he was showing them, and, you know, being able to connect with what all of that is? And finally, I mean, I think one of the biggest things is, we... our responsibility is to make good citizens out of our students, and for them to be able to have respect for the resources that are around them is going to do nothing but make them better citizens and kind of open up their world outside of that, you know, sixteen-year-old teenage human beings only being the people that occupy this earth that we live on, so.
So, what we have in mind is to take that woodlot, which already has some existing pathways through it, and improve upon that space. So, widen some of the pathways, get them set with mulch, so that they're passable. You know, at different times of year, they're real muddy or what have you. We'd also like to get some marker signs that you might see at like an arboretum for some of the wildflowers that are out there, some of the invasive species that are out there. We'd like to do some signage at the entrances to that area that denotes it as Vermillion Local Schools' property, and encourage people to, you know, take nothing from the space and not to leave trash, and have some trash containers. We'd like to incorporate into that space Mrs. Rini's body farm, if you will, sort of at the edge of that property, so that you can get the various limiting factors of light and sun, et cetera, and temperature on both sides of that area. We had previously been using this space that was at the south end of that lot with all of our classes for lessons on the process of succession, but of course, that space now will be used by the fieldhouse, so we would like to have sort of an area that we can manage and maintain. And before we started writing grants to get money to do that, we wanted to make sure that it was okay with the Board of Ed if we actually did use it, so.
That's a great idea.
I think it's a fantastic idea.
Talking of woods.
Correct. Between Sanford and parking lot.
The woods, all ours, how deep are...
And that's something that we have to investigate, but we consider...
Goes all the way back to the fence and the property lines to the Sanford and I don't know the street behind it, but you can see it on the ground here.
Do we go to the east side of the woods, behind those houses? Are we going to the...
Yes, all the way to the property lines.
Okay.
So, that's something that we wanted to move forward on, if we could have permission to do so.
So, there's paths back there already for cross-country?
Right.
And the plan would be to leave the cross-country as it is?
Well, there's sort of unimproved paths that just have been worn by use. I know that the cross-country team does use them for that purpose, but the idea would be to make them more passable with, you know, we have to investigate what all the possibilities are, but sort of our vision was like a wood chip mulch sort of thing, such that, you know, particularly in a low area where it might get real muddy at a certain time right here, that wouldn't be so much of an issue.
All the trees you're planning on leaving, the trees though as they are...
Right.
They're in trees.
No, that's not... I mean, we certainly don't want to remove trees, that's not the idea. There are some areas where poison ivy comes right out into the path, so things like that, you know, you want to make it useful and safe for kids at the same time.
Just checking, Mr. Burton, make sure it's not somewhere across country regulation. You can't run over one shot, you never know.
Right.
That's a good idea, though.
Yeah, I think it's outstanding. Thank you for linking out the box and getting the kids out to experience something different.
You need anything else from us?
Um, I just... we just needed to get a go-ahead, start, you know, investigating and doing some research, writing grants and so forth, so.
Go.
Okay. Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Rini?
That's it, thank you.
Legislative update, Mr. Harding does not have anything for us this evening? True? Okay. With that, we are going to move on to item number seven. It's gonna be a quick executive session. I'd like to recommend a resolution, move into executive session for the purpose of consultation. The board's attorney to discuss matters which are subject of pending or imminent court action. A second?
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes. Seven fifteen... or seven twelve, I'm sorry. We will move on to item number eight, which is public participation. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Hi, thank you. A lot of people here tonight, and you know, I come to almost all of them, and I always have an opinion on them. A week ago this morning, I was on the computer in Facebook and the letter of business, and I thought the school was getting a real law deal. The criticism... I believe in criticism, but constructive, and some of the information... And I don't blame them, because unfortunately, we don't get many of those things covered as well. The newspapers don't cover them like they used to. Ode Journal does an excellent job, but they're confined to space too, so not everything that comes before the board or you're discussing whatever gets into the newspapers. I've said for quite a while, even while I was teaching, that gossip is our number-one problem. Stories get out there that half-truth or not-truth at all, and it suddenly becomes gospel. But unfortunately, the kids, the staff, you people oftentimes get blamed for that, and it's not your fault. Absolutely not your fault. I was hoping there'd be more people here tonight that wanted to speak on the issue that I want to bring up. When the high school was built and we first occupied it in sixty-nine and... no, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, there was no way to get from Route 60 to Valley View except going downtown by going to South Street and across the River Road. Big problem was going to school. I'd be caught by the train, sometimes both places. Buses oftentimes would be late because of that. So, when the school board bought behavioral property to build the St. Away Middle School, it was their intent to have school driveway connect the two schools. In fact, if you look at the drawings, at the south end, one of those ways was supposed to be for loading and unloading school buses, and the other one was for the school buses to turn around to get out. Well, when they did open it up, there were lots of us, and I was one of them, because I own property on both sides of town, and wanted to be able to get over there quickly and easily. Well, the board felt, and they were right, that's a safety factor, having the driveways open to the public. They weren't designed for that. There was no intention of that. They're narrow and they're curvy. Well, the board tried to close them, first saying, "No longer use them, or people wouldn't pay attention to that," till the board decided to put up a gate. That was terrible, the way that people acted. They were going around the gate when the gates were closed, over the school lawn, so the board decided that they were gonna propose. That made them even angrier. One night, I was over here to a basketball game, and when the game was over, I started out the south end to pick up my car, and there was a pickup truck on the school lawn with quite a few people there. And as I walked by, they were going to take those posts out. So, I came back into the building, found an administrator, and told him what was going on. He said, "I want the police," while they were here for the game, so they went out. I couldn't hear what was being said, but as I went to my car, the language was terrible. They were calling the police pigs and all other kinds of names. The school administrator, I think, going to crawl and drown somewhere, because for some reason or other, they thought it was a constitutional right to use the school driveway to connect. I agreed at the time. Finally, the board decided, "Okay, we'll take it down if it is too emotional," and there was no other connection. So, the mayor at the time also taught, and he got together with both sides and said, "Let's see if we can't at least have a temporary driveway across until there's another way to connect with Valley View." I didn't pay a whole lot of attention, because I wasn't out there a lot when traffic was heavy. Was a safety problem. When my boys were at the high school or at middle school before that, we had better than three thousand kids along that driveway. And again, I thought people would be reasonable. Now, when I heard about the placement of the play equipment at the new school, I thought, gee, I saw those drawings, I'm gonna go over and look. So, I came over the afternoon, it was about one o'clock, and I thought, I think I got a point, because it does come real close. So, I came on down to the fading parking lot to turn around, and I hadn't sat there for a while. While I was sitting, less than five minutes, there were at least a dozen, if not more, cars going across the school's driveway. I raced, and when I pulled out, somebody coming from Sanford Street almost crawled up my tailpipe behind me. And I looked, and the... These limits, twenty miles an hour. I know he was going forty, at least, and I've had experience. I was a police officer when I was in college, and my grandfather, my dad, and my brother were all career police officers. But anyway, he around me on double yellow lines, and I thought, ha, he's gonna get stopped by the stoplight at sixty. So, I didn't increase my speed, but he was up there almost immediately. I pulled up behind him, put it in park, and was going to tell him, "Well, light changed and off the truck." Then I got to thinking, I always bring my papers for recycling over to the school, at least once, if not more, a month. And the last time I brought a load of papers, same thing, there were lots of cars, and all of them were braking in the speed limit. School was in session! Aside from the fact that we have the school buildings, we've got all the playing fields, so even when school is not in session, people are overusing and misusing your driveway, and I'm sure many of you know.
Are you... is your point trying to say that the playground's probably a little unsafe? Where's that?
My fir... when I first saw it, I thought maybe could consider moving it. But that's not our problem. The problem is the speed and the frequency of traffic. Now, when the board was having a real difficult time deciding whether they were gonna let the public use it or not, a member of the board owned property between Valley View and Route 60, and offered a right-of-way from Hollyview over to Route 60. Nobody could afford it. Well, it hasn't been the school's responsibility, but the township, the county, the city could not afford it. So, that didn't come. When we were studying the facilities, the committee which I was on for a better than a year, talked about another connection of Route 60. Right-of-way, the architect said, "Oh, the state will never approve another..." what I call a curb cut. I didn't believe it. So, I had occasion to go to Ashland, visited State Highway Division III for another reason. So, I asked them. "Oh, I think I heard about that." So, they got the material out, and they look, and they look at all the driveways and roads and so on that contain, "We'll never approve another one." So, that doesn't look like it is a possibility. In the meantime, the city did provide at least two other ways to get in and out. One is Devon Drive, and that's been open for quite a while, twenty-five years, so that is a way that they could go. Also, Maple View has been extended clear to West River Road. That's another possibility. So, what I'm suggesting for the board, you can't take action right now of limiting that driveway or closing it. It's too much of an emotional thing. So, what I would recommend is that the board set up a commission made up of the police chief, the principals of the school buildings, probably the board, residents of Valley View, residents of Route 60. Do a traffic count, first of all, and see how much that driveway... and it's not a street! If I hear somebody call that a street again, I'm gonna spick nipples, I think.
Tim, do we do a traffic scan?
It is not a street. It's not a dedicated street. Now, when Bobby Johnson was mayor, and this issue was hot in town, he went to the school officials and to the council and said, "How about if we make a temporary use of the driveway?" And the city agreed that they would maintain it, powder snow, things of that nature, and then, when there was another possibility, the school board could decide whether they were gonna continue it as a thoroughfare or a private driveway. And by the way, it is private. I asked legal advice, and they said, "It's just like it would be somebody's driveway that you drove through their garage to get to the other side," even though it's, yes, a public body, but it is, under the law, a private driveway. It's not big enough. It doesn't go the right places to be a thoroughfare. Now, since we're gonna have all three schools very soon in close proximity, I would like to see the board consider what to do with that right-of-way. Possibly, a committee could study it, and first of all, let's do a traffic count, one of those hoses across, because when I sat there that day for less than five minutes, there were at least a dozen cars, not going in and out of schools, but from Sanford Street to sixty, to sixty, to...
That's a good idea.
When I left parking lot, there was somebody right on my table, got at the right-of-way, he was going at least forty mile an hour when he passed me, and crossed past me on a double yellow line. Our police can't expect to be here all the time. I know they're here before school in the morning and in the evening. I would suggest that the municipal court, if anybody is cited for speed in this rules area, have their name, address, published, and what the penalty is in the newspaper. So, we know who these people are that misuse and endanger our children.
Can you address this, and Mr. Pepper, during the week give them a call? It's a great idea, establishing a commission to look at the traffic and...
Well, people seem to think on that, and you were in there too, that the board makes all the decisions and they know everything about everything. No disrespect, no you don't, and you can't affect the people. Mr. Pepper knows a lot of things, others of us, of course, as I observe, but I am very, very careful. Football games that I used to... The band would come from the school building, come across the driveway, and people wouldn't stop for them. Same with two football teams, ours and our opponent's.
I think we all share your concerns. We see the increased traffic and then the speed that's going down the road. Can you reach out to him, maybe tomorrow, set up a meeting, talk about safety on St. Away Drive?
Perhaps tomorrow. I'm going to have some surgery later in the week, but I'd be more than happy to put my two cents worth in. I don't know, more than that. If I had known when my kids were in two schools involved, I would have insisted that they do something about this, and boards have discussed it a number of times, I think even the present board, but they know it's a hot potato. But those people have to understand, the safety of our children is more important than saving ten minutes to get from Valley View to Route 60. So, thank you for your attention. I was hoping that there would be lots of people here tonight. They said they were coming, but I want to hear what they have to say too.
Yeah, one thing they were addressing on the social media stuff, the postal was the concern of the placement of playground, and all of us share that concern. When we get into the superintendent's report, he's got some ideas on the playground placement.
If it wasn't true, maybe... My very first impression was, maybe they better move it, where I don't feel, I have not walked across, so I don't know where it could be put. walked property, so I don't know where it could be put.
He's, he's got some ideas, and about 10 minutes, we'll hit it.
Good. But again, you gotta remember, the safety...
Captain, I know Mr. Smith could call me, and we'll talk during the week.
There was one accident that I recall, because I saw it happen, was after a high school dance, and somebody was coming across Saylorway, the dedicated street, and ran up guy wire on the electric pole. They were hurt, and there was a lot of traffic, property damage. I don't know. Some have said there have been close calls of their own students. But you, the board, have provided sidewalks everywhere. Whatever happened to safety routes to school?
Next summer.
I'm hoping that somebody will put a minute on Sanford Street.
Next summer.
Again, the safety of our kids. Mine are through, but since four of you board members were in school when I taught, two of them got stuck in my classroom. You're all my kids, and your kids are your grandkids, and they are most sacred than this community has. And to save a few minutes on having maybe go down across Sanford Drive, because that goes to a good bit. The property owner on, British Park property owner on Douglas, didn't allow cars to go by Amelia when you guys bought it. I think the city did put half the street in, because there was a lawsuit, people didn't want the traffic in front of his house. Well, where does this school board have in a lawsuit against all the people that misuse it?
Well, give Mr. Pepper a call. Let him get this, I appreciate it.
Quite taking too much time.
That's okay.
Thanks, Mr. Smith.
Anybody else have anything to address?
Yes.
Ross Street. Real quick, Terry reminded some of that, and I know the secret is the school, when it got placed down Route 60, and they had crosswalk signals at the intersection of Saylorway and Route 60. Maybe almost a year ago, there was a traffic incident, took out one signal controls. So the crosswalk signals themselves, and one's missing in the southeast corner of the intersection.
Wait here, buddy. Do you want to just get it?
Yep.
Get it going.
There's two quick solutions, perhaps.
I'll check with the...
Speed bumps.
With the Birmingham police on that.
And then I noticed a number of cities...
We have enough speed bumps on Saylorway Drive.
Why, no.
They're there already.
But they shouldn't be going over 30 mile an hour anyhow. And then something I've seen in downtowns of many cities, if they have, it looks like a cone, but it's a tall thing, it's fast into the road, and it says, must stop with the dust, crosswalks. That is a possibility. I think it would cost, I don't know, pay attention to it.
All good ideas, let's...
Thanks again.
Thank you. Anybody else? That, we move on to item number nine, which are reports and our superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the facility update, and just gonna give you a quick idea of what's happening with the fieldhouse. Mr. Rini supplied me with some bullet items tonight, so we're just gonna do this very briefly, because we have some other things on the agenda than an executive session to get to tonight, so it's just gonna be a real brief update for facilities. We are on task and on target with the timeline so far in the schedule for the fieldhouse. The topsoil was removed from the building pad. The building pad was then stabilized with some Portland cement. 12 inches of stone was placed and compacted on the pad to stabilize the soil after that. Flutters have been laid out, and excavation of the flutters are scheduled to start on December 29. Site utilities are ready to begin, and the waterline installation is scheduled to start on December 15. The submittal process for all equipment and products are continuing. So Simonson is the contractor for the fieldhouse. Everything so far is on target, and the green space and the board so far is satisfied because those times are being met and everything is going well so far. The weather seems to be cooperating too, which is, which has been good, so...
How much more do we have before we, are we still in a weather-sensitive stage of the fieldhouse?
Yeah, most days are all winter on this stuff.
Okay.
Just a real quick, just a few comments about the new facility. We're just working on the schedules with that. We've looked at a couple of possibilities for the substantial completion date on that, and we are not quite certain as to when that's going to happen at this point. We're, we're still working on that process, and I'll be updating the board, and we'll be talking with the board as that progresses. So we're working with the architects, we're working with Green Space and RFC on that substantial completion date. We did talk a little bit about it at the last board meeting. We did say that there was going to be an extension of time needed. Fortunately, the elementary school teachers and the students are in a warm, safe, dry building over there, and so there's, that's being taken care of. So I'll let you know as that goes on. The other thing that we wanted to just talk about real quick, as Mr. Dawson alluded to and Mr. Smith has come up to talk about, is the playground. There have been some concerns from the public that the playground is too close to the road, and as you're coming around the bend down Saylorway Drive, there's the curb right there. And when the site was first designed, of course, everything is done on paper, and the architects consult with the board, and we talk about this, but until it really gets laid out, it's really hard to visualize. And what's happened here, as the playground has been put in, and as we've seen it and the community has seen it, we do have some concerns. And so we've talked with the architects about the possibilities of what we can do to rectify the situation. And a couple alternatives include putting a high-speed rail, guardrail, that we have talked with the city, that they might be interested in, might be willing to put up to help to, not just help, but to stop any car or truck that would be coming through that area, and not be able to hold the road, and that high-speed guardrail would hold them back. Another alternative that we're looking at is to sink some ballards down into the curves and into the property. And that would be a steel ballard that would do the same thing, but just have a little bit of a different visual look than the guardrail. So that's an option. Another option would be behind the ballards to put some boulders. That's another option. So we're looking at several different options. Quite honestly, another option that the board is thinking about is we have some playground equipment that's still left over at South Street that most likely will not be used totally over there. We wouldn't be taking it all, but we were looking at the northeast corner of the property, and I've got some drawings here that I'll pass out to the board, and then I've got a larger drawing that I'll put up here in just a moment, so that you can visualize what we could possibly propose to the board that we could look at as an option. I'm gonna pass these over, and you can just pass them through the audience, and you could get a smaller look at what it looks like.
I think some of the concern that I've heard from people in the community were not only the, the safety from the road, but also the limited playground area, and some concern over the location of the swale in relation to where the playground is. So if you take the speed safety, road safety issue, and the swale and limited area to walk around, I think we need to seriously look at relocating that to that northeast corner.
I, I think the thought that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the thought would not be to actually move that playground. We would keep that playground in place. Then we would also take some of the equipment that's over at South Street, and there's plenty of equipment still left over there, and it would be placed in this northeast area, and we could do the labor with our staff here to remove that playground, but one of the things that we can't do is to reinstall it. You need certified playground installers to put the playground back up in its place, or put some of that equipment back up in its place. So as Mr. Dawson did say about the pleasant, about the present playground in that area is there is a swale. The swale is not finished yet, though, at this point. There's soil that's put down in there, there's still some more fill. It's not gonna have quite the, the depth that you're looking at right now. If you look at it now, there's about a four foot, maybe a little bit more than a four foot drop. I think it's designed to be a four foot drop, and then there's going to be some fill to be put in that area. And the idea could be that we use this playground primarily on good weather days and dry days, and not use it at all when it's going to be wet or the road conditions are poor. We can then take the kids over to this playground and let them play on this playground if the school and the students and the teachers are concerned about the weather. So that would give us a possible option.
So in addition to worrying about the safety concerns of a car going off the road or something like that, one of the things we talked about, and I just wanna reiterate again, is that playground near the street was to be fenced in as well.
It is.
That would prevent, prevent a child from getting too close to the road.
Right. It does have a fence, and thanks for reminding me about that, Mr. Haberman. I didn't mention that, that there is a fence. So we're looking at multiple possibilities. We're all, as you've seen, we put around the district some telephone poles with some roping. That's another option. We could put some telephone poles, the boulders, the fence. We could put a guardrail there, a high-speed guardrail, and boulders there. I mean, that would really reinforce it. And we're not talking about just small rocks. We're talking about massive boulders that could hold that back.
I, I think you still have a concern over space for kids just to play kickball and run around. I, I don't think, it's not gonna cost us that much to build the equipment for BES to that northeast corner, so there's some options.
And we could save on the labor, as I said, of taking some of that equipment that's out already on South Street and moving it back to, to that location.
So couldn't we get a proposal with some cost estimates to relocate that and create a...
Just, just so you know, without, the full estimate to take some of that equipment out was $11,000. And that was take it out, install it, mulch it, do everything with no, none of our labor involved. I'm imagining we should be able to cut some of that, cut that by at least 40 percent.
Okay, then we may add some of that leftover project.
At this point, there's $96,000 left in contingency money. We're tight. We're tight with the money, and we'll talk about that, I'm sure, this evening.
So we've got all spring to let that go out?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, any more questions, any comments on that? Okay, the last item that I had on my report was a athletic director update. As you know, at the last meeting, we've been talking about the selection of an athletic director. Mr. Britner is retiring in June of this year. We formed a committee, we've been working on the committee for the last month or so. It's difficult to coordinate everyone's schedule when you try to bring candidates in to get, get them all scheduled, but we are down to the final two candidates, and we're very happy with the quality of the candidates that we have. We're just finalizing some reference checks on the candidates. We're talking amongst our team members, making sure that we're happy with the final selection, and the plan would be to bring that candidate to the board for a final recommendation at the next board meeting. Any questions on that? Okay, that's all I have.
Move on to item B, treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the following fundraise for policy 5830, National Honor Society Kewalk, December 18, National Honor Society of the Northern Forests Rested, December 9 through May 29, National Honor Society Teacher Luncheon, December 3 through May, and Prom de Don, the cost to amend their original fundraise reform to show the cost for 50-50 raffle tickets will be reduced to $10 per ticket.
I'll move, I'll second. Any discussion? Call it over.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Okay, then, with that, we move to item number 10, discussion items. Anything to discuss? Is that... Okay. We'll move on to item 11, which is the consent agenda. Superintendent Trecher recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted. I want single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda, voted upon separately. I'm going to note that everything is listed. Is there anything we want to pull off? I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call it over.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
We have nothing pulled off, consent agenda. We will move on to our second public participation session. Is there anybody that wishes to speak here? Okay, move on to item 14 on the addendum, and that is a recommend a resolution, move into executive session for the purpose of consultation with the board's attorney to discuss matters which are subject to pending or imminent court action. I'll move, second. Call it over.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.